Okay, at six o'clock. Welcome to the June 4th meeting of the governing body. I call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akala, who is going to provide the invocation, stand as you are able, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I'll be reading a poem from one of the United States' most beloved poets, Mary Oliver. I was considering whether a poem should be read or not, but I figured that some poems are the most beautiful prayer, just as many prayers can act as some of the most beautiful poetry. So this is called "The Summer Day." Who made the world? Who made the swan and the black bear? Who made the grasshopper? This grasshopper, I mean. The one who has flung herself out of the grass? The one who is eating sugar out of my hand? Who is moving her jaws back and forth instead of up and down? Who is gazing around with her enormous and complicated eyes? Now she lifts her pale forearms and thoroughly washes her face. Now she snaps her wings open and floats away. I don't know exactly what a prayer is. I do know how to pay attention. How to fall down into the grass. How to kneel down in the grass. How to be idle and blessed. How to stroll through the fields, which is what I have been doing all day. Tell me, what else should I have done? Doesn't everything die at last and too soon? Tell me, what is it you plan to do with your one wild and precious life?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. First item of business is a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Mayor Padilla?
Here.
Councilmember Hiller?
Here.
Valdivia Akala?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Banks?
Here.
Cale?
Here.
Miller? Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
Hofer?
Here.
We have nine present and one absent.
Next item on the agenda is mayoral proclamations. We have one this evening, recognizing United Way of Call Valley, Day of Giving. We have a couple of representatives in the audience. Jessica, I saw you earlier in here, and Angel, I saw you come in. If you want to, you can join me here at the mic as I read the proclamation. Okay. Well, we all know that United Way does wonderful things in our community, and it's been a part of our community for decades. And when we give, we give that we know that it goes to a good cause, it has the most impact in our community, and it helps everyone. People we will never know, but we know that we're doing our part. So it's important and appropriate that I read this proclamation by the mayor. Whereas United Way of Call Valley creates and cultivates an unbreakable network of support for strong, healthy, and equitable communities; and whereas United Way is committed to the success of the whole family in all of its forms, recognizing that the success of one individual in the family is inextricably linked to the success of everyone; and whereas United Way invests and manages millions of dollars to help ensure that regardless of their zip code, every family and individual has access to the resources to live, learn, and thrive; and whereas United Way thinks and acts strategically about volunteering to increase the capacity of the local nonprofit community, to serve our neighbors in need; and whereas United Way convenes conversations among donors, partners, and stakeholders to create a common understanding of our greatest challenges and to generate better and more inclusive and achievable solutions; and whereas this work is not possible without donor support, and individuals across Topeka have the ability to invest in this work on United Way of Call Valley 2024 Day of Giving. Now, therefore, I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim June 5th, 2024, as United Way of Call Valley Day of Giving. And witness thereof, I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby affix my official signature and the official seal of the City of Topeka, Kansas, on this day of June 4, 2024. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. We could not do this work without all of your support, and we truly appreciate your willingness to provide this proclamation and allowing us to share how we can all make a difference in our community. So thank you.
You're very much welcome. Have a good evening. Thank you again. Okay. Well, I encourage everybody, given that opportunity on the Day of Giving, give as much or as little, but give something I think you'll find that all put together really helps our community. And we'll move on to the agenda item number three. If the clerk will read.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Carmen Romero Nichols to the Topeka Human Relations Commission to fill an expired term ending June 7, 2026. B is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Kenneth Scott to the Downtown Business Improvement District Advisory Board to fill a term ending June 30, 2026.
Okay, we've heard the appointment says read. Is there a motion? Councilwoman Hiller? Motion to approve by Councilwoman Hiller. Second by Councilwoman Cale. Can we do... Well, I still have to do roll call, since we have one. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
We have eight yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion being carried. I want to take an opportunity. I'm not sure I see Carmen Romero Nichols in the audience. There she is. She's sitting behind Tuck. Would you stand, please, and anyone else who's been mentioned and be reappointed, please stand so we can acknowledge you and thank you for stepping forward and continuing to serve the city. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Move on to Agenda Item 4, Presentations. Madam Clerk?
Our first one is curb ramp replacement program.
Mr. City Manager, we want to introduce who our presenter is.
Mayor of Governing Body, this is Travis Lathrop, who is our Tech Services GIS Manager, who will make this presentation to you. And I know there's only three presentations on the agenda, but there is an add-on at the end. I promise it'll be painless.
All right. Sir?
Good evening. Again, my name is Travis Lathrop. I am the manager for the Technical Services Group. Our team, we are the stewards of the city's GIS data set, which is a geospatial representation of the city's own assets that exist in the field. We map everything from water lines in the ground to motion trackers on top of masked arms at intersections. Part of my team's mission is to provide tools that empower city employees to enhance city operations and improve decision-making. And tonight, I'm here to review one such tool that supports the Curb Ramp Replacement Program. The Curb Ramp Replacement Program is an initiative aimed at enhancing accessibility and safety for pedestrians, particularly those with disabilities. By evaluating and upgrading curb ramps, this program ensures compliance with the Pedestrian Right-of-Way Accessibility Guideline, which promotes a more inclusive urban environment. So what is PROWAG? PROWAG stands for Pedestrian Right-of-Way Accessibility Guideline. And this is a guideline that was established in the early 2000s by the Department of Transportation and the Department of Justice. And the guideline itself was set as an example on how to provide safe and accessible urban environments, especially for the disabled. So with that being said, we have developed an application that will allow the Public Works team to leverage as they work through their curb ramp replacement program. And I am sharing the screen currently, and I'll walk the council through what we are looking at. All right. So first thing, we've got a map, and we have some numbers. The numbers on the left delineate the actual intersections where we have PROWAG compliant ramps and non-compliant ramps. We have a map on the right side of the window. We see a lot of colors. What are we looking at? The purple dots are going to represent intersections without any curb cuts around them. The green dots are going to represent curb cuts that are currently in compliance with the PROWAG standards. And blue dots are going to represent curb cuts that are not in compliance with the PROWAG standards. The map is fully interactive, so when people use it, they can move it around, to zoom into certain locations. There's going to be a bit of latency here, so please bear with. But you can zoom in and out on the map by using the tools that are in here. You can see the map will zoom out. The map will zoom in. So if you're looking at a specific neighborhood or area of interest, you can quickly zoom to it within the map window. Sorry, I get confused. I've got two keyboards in front of me, and I was touching the wrong one. So let's move it back out a little bit. So as I was saying, the map will allow you to zoom in tight on some... As tight as you want. And you can really tell the story of what's happening in a particular area of town. Are intersections PROWAG compliant, or are they not? And this is a tool that can be leveraged, like I said, by the Public Works team as they are addressing ways to potentially spend the city money as it relates to upgrading the PROWAG environment. So I was asked to come and walk the council through these numbers. And as you can see, we have approximately 7,000 non-compliant curb ramps in the city and 6,100 that are. Do we have any questions?
Councilwoman Dobler?
Yeah, I'm not sure you'll be able to answer this, but maybe somebody can. What's the process for converting... I'm not even going to say the term. Just sidewalk, non-compliant sidewalks to compliant sidewalks? Maybe you can walk through that. How do we pick the intersections to renovate?
Currently, it's a very inaccurate science, which is what led to ask the Public Works TSG to help us get an inventory of what we have. Right? Right now, we've basically... 10 years ago, they did a pedestrian master plan. In that pedestrian master plan, they used a very inexact heat map type of science to pick areas that were hotspots that didn't have sidewalks, didn't have curb ramps. And those became the target areas, and we have been chained to that for 10 years. We are in the process now of engaging a consultant to update the pedestrian master plan. And what we're going to do is make this a data-driven process, where we are going to... This summer, we're going to have a cruise of students from Washburn are going to go out with Go cameras and basically with some new technology created by a professor at the University of Missouri. They are going to do a pavement condition assessment of all those corridors where we have sidewalks, determine the condition of that. And then we are going to use a number of factors, including PCI, as well as some social justice ones, to come up with a ranking in terms of where we should go in and create sidewalks, where we should replace bad sidewalks. We're going to catalog the condition of the ramps as part of this overall process. So we are going to have a good data-driven process for selecting and improving these. Does that help?
That helps immensely. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of questions, and Braxton, I don't even know if you can answer them. I've been on the council for 15 years. Like, I was elected first when the first 10-year citywide half-cent sales tax was passed. And in that budget, there was a couple hundred thousand a year for ADA ramps. And the estimate then was that in eight years, we would have all the ramps that were needed in, and then we could spend that money on something else. And so they worked along diligently, as far as I know. And yet, when we got about to the eighth or ninth year, my understanding was that they had pretty much done everything, except the ones that were difficult, that like needed a retaining wall and a ramp down because of it... There may be been steps at the intersection before. And so there was a kind of expensive workaround. So I'm puzzled at this point to have such a huge list of needs. I also have been puzzled at the fact that so many ramps were done, and they're falling apart. So I wondered if the ones that are blue are ones that actually were on that done list before, but the standards of how to do them the best way has changed. Could you respond to both of those?
Certainly, I can attempt to. Travis, do you happen to have the number of intersections that we do not have ramps on? You've got displayed here PROWAG compliant, which is the 2023 standard, correct, versus non-compliant, which means they don't meet the 2023 standard. But do you have at your fingertips, how many intersections do not have ramps?
I do not.
Okay. So the starting point is, is when I stepped in as Public Works Director, there were lots of opportunities that I inherited to improve things. And certainly, I can tell you that, not knowing exactly how many intersections that we even had ramps at, what was compliant and not compliant, the starting point is having good data from which we can make good decisions. I will tell you that it was a very bold statement to tell you that it would only take eight years to get all of the city's intersection into full compliance. When you look at, an average cost of a ramp is $5,000, and we have $300,000 a year. You do the math in terms of how many you can do, and some intersections may be $60,000 because you have to add retaining walls, and you've got to run 200 feet of sidewalk to make it ADA compliant. So the eight years was a very bold statement in terms of that being able to be done. Where I can tell you is, right now, we are coming up with a process that is going to be data-driven in terms of where we prioritize in terms of ramps and sidewalks.
Thank you for that. If I can be a little more specific on the other question. You know, the way the ramps were done at the time was to put the concrete and the, whatever you call it, the fan out. And then to attach, generally, it was a red composite of some sort with bumps on it. And those have not aged well. So again, with the blue dots, I didn't know if we... How many we were needing to redo and what that standard now is, if it's different, or we just need to replace the red pads.
So the term of art are the truncated domes, right? And so one of the things that we have done in the last year is that we now require our ADA ramps to be done with our same Class 1 high-quality concrete that has the hard aggregate, because there is a lot of abuse that those take in terms of vehicles running up on. Certainly, there are different ways to do the truncated domed. We've learned from experience that the bricks don't work because they're ultimately going to shift and come out of there or fail. The best ones are to wet-set the panel, whether it's metal or plastic into the concrete so that you've got a good base on it. The standards really, since 2002 to 2023, for the PROWAG compliant curb ramps have really changed very little in terms of the dimension, the width of it, the landing space, the height, and the spacing of the truncated domes. I was honestly surprised to see how little once I had a consultant lay out for me the full saga from 2002 to 2023 in terms of what little changes. Where you see big differences is the ones that were constructed back in the 80s and 90s, because at the time, you had the ADA was the guideline. And you didn't even have truncated domes. It was just a different color of cement. And so the ones that you see are non-compliant, probably a lot of those, you know, we really would have to drill in in terms of why an intersection isn't compliant. It may be that it's more than a 2% cross slope. It may be that they don't have the four-foot-by-four-foot landing area at the top of it. There are just a number of issues. So as we learn from our mistakes, we improve in terms of coming up with better engineering, better design, so that these will be able to last for a much longer time, so that I'm not having to go back in and change things every 10 years, right? I would expect to see a curb ramp have a very good useful life in its 20 to 30-plus years, right?
Thank you so much. And if I can, thank you, Travis. There's a lot of people in different departments that think you walk on water. And this is really good stuff. Thank you, Mayor.
Where were you guys when I was married? All right, thank you.
Further questions for Travis or for Braxton?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Travis. Okay. Next presentation, City Manager?
Mayor of Governing Body, Shane Grau. I hope I got that right, Shane, somewhere along the line. Shane is the Topeka Performing Arts Center Board President, and he's here to give you an update.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for the time this evening. Have the slide deck pulled up there. Do you want to jump to the third slide? So I'm going to cover a handful of these slides here just to kind of give you guys an update on where we are right now, current ongoings and state, and then kind of move on down the road from there. So give you an update on how many people are coming through your doors here at T-PAC downstairs. 2023, we had over 62,000 people coming in through rentals or co-promo shows or shows we put on ourself. One of the big hit points on this slide here, obviously, is that almost half of the people that came in those doors came from outside Shawnee County. So big push to bring in dollars from outside to support those. Other point on that slide is, obviously, you can see during COVID, we got beat up for obvious reasons, and we're trying to dig back out of that. If you want to jump into the fifth slide. So spotlight on youth. For T-PAC, it's a huge, community-based, involved event. So the Shuffle Theater Clinic, School Time Theater, and then obviously here just recently, the Young Artist Awards, that the mayor got to join us out. Again, giving back to the local youth and community, bringing in a good chunk of young kids to those doors. And we hope that a lot of those young kids come back to be on that stage later on or go off into other people's stage there. Next slide. So School Time Theater, just by the numbers specifically. 2023, we had over 1,500 students and 40 buses that came in during the day. One of the things that people probably don't realize about T-PAC is it's not just a Friday, Saturday evening show only. Throughout the week, we have rentals, we have committees, we have people renting that space out, and being able to bring programming to youth in the community is a huge part of that one. So that being said, if you want to go to the next slide. So as we talked about, and you guys have graciously approved us for CIP going forward for '25 through '29, there are some updates that we need to make in T-PAC. So upgrading programming, upgrading feet in the door for T-PAC is going to affect all the other local businesses downtown, whether that's restaurants, whether that's hotel rentals, so on and so forth. But these are just a few of the things that we're going to ask for from some of the CIP funds. If you want to go to the next slide there. One of the things that we wanted to point out here, the challenges that we're facing as of currently, is we're in a huge HVAC renovation. They're doing construction as we speak, tearing things up on the basement floor and the first floor, so on and so forth. So if you add up these numbers, we're looking well north of half a million dollars in lost programming rental, rental revenue throughout the rest of 2024. The next slides, I'm not going to jump into too terrible of any details here, but realistically, what we're looking at is some marquee updates and a lot of other updates on the first floor and the basement. So one of the things that I really wanted to point out, if we go down to three more slides. So KBS, our executive director, Jason Tryon, have all been working together. While we're doing that construction right now, if we wanted to make any of those updates in the basement of the first floor, we might as well do it while they're already working. If they have a wall torn down, if they have a ceiling torn down, looking to save hundreds of thousands of dollars in construction cost to do that in the meantime, rather than having them finish all that construction, and then we come back next year, the year after that, a year after that, and saying, hey, let's come back and tear all this stuff back down. So pretty straightforward there. We worked with Jason Tryon. He's going to be coming to speak at your Infrastructure Committee here in the next couple of weeks on that. Next slide there. So creating world-class experience here. If you add up all the different scope of work that we'd want to get completed, we're just a little south of 800,000, including the marquee. And it kind of details some of those and the rest of the improvements down the road. So wanted to give you guys a heads up on kind of where we are, what was going on, planned improvements coming down the road, a handful of other things I wanted to hit on. We have a good chunk of shows coming up. We have Infinity Dance, Dance Factory, Radiant Dance, Barbara's Dancer Side, a lot of dance here this summer. T-PAC Golf Summit July 26th. Joe Bonamassa, August 8th, pending August 9th, if we can fill that one up. It looks like we will. At Kansas for two shows in October. And then we're right back around into our fall programming. So any questions you guys have on any of those slides or anything else?
Any questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Is there any plans for the steps out front?
Any plans for the steps out front on the south side? Yes, I'm going to refer back to the... Rory, our executive director, probably is going to have day-to-day details if he wants to join up here and cover some of that.
Is that south and east, or is it just south?
Hello, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. So yes, we do have plans on fixing the portion of the steps. If I'm not mistaken, the steps were fixed one time before, and you guys up north, you guys use some type of... I'm from the south, so I don't know the technical name of it, but it's some type of solution that you put on the steps to keep the ice from forming on the steps. Well, anyway, when you was fixing the steps, that solution ate up the material that caused the steps to deteriorate again. So Jason was saying that him and his crew, Public Works, they were trying to figure out a way to fix it properly. And that's what we're working with Jason on that. But yes, we do plan on fixing it in the near future.
That's not part of this plan? Braxton, it's not part of this plan?
As far as the funds for this, these are all internal and in marquee parts.
Okay.
We have two projects in design right now under the firm. And one of those is to do the replacement of the failed steps on the south side. The other is, we have a project in design to add an ADA compliant path going to the east. And as part of that plan, we have also incorporated lighting, so we will have better lighting in there. I understand that you took a tumble...
I did.
...after the last council meeting.
Did.
The lights were out. And since then, we have gotten the lights operational, so at least there will be lighting there. But then, as part of the new ADA compliant path, that will make a much more safe, secure route to get down to the east side, as well as we're going to incorporate lighting, which is a substantial additional cost. We're going to include that as an alt item when we go out to bit.
I appreciate that, Braxton. I did notice that the lighting was out. But even with the lighting that's on towards the east, it's terrible. And usually, the officers are good about put their flashlight on so I can see the stairs. But yeah, it was not a good, good... But yeah, it was not a good feel to fall down the stairs.
And my apologies that the lights were out that night and that you had a tumble.
Well, and I can appreciate that. I just don't want it to happen to anybody else. And because it was.
Which is why we have that in design for that ADA accessible route because that will make a much safer, more secure path to the east.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can I have one?
Yes, sir. To add on to what this brother here just said, with us getting our marquee fixed, we also pricing up lights to cover a lot of that area. So whatever you guys do is going to be extra coverage from us too to go along with our marquee. And then the marquee would actually add so much luminous to the area too because it's going to be on, it's going to be an LED screen. So we'll be able to help out a whole lot with the lighting, as you just said, to the east side and to the steps. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Just a second Rory, we might have another question. Deputy Mayor Vadevi Akala.
Thank you. Not meaning to harp on this, but I was coming out of the chambers that night that Councilwoman Ortiz fell. It was, look, we have to hear this to drill at home. It was so dark out there that I couldn't even tell it was her. I didn't know who it was that fell. It could have been any one of us, any one of us council people, anyone in the public. There was no light, the steps are in horrific condition, and I understand the need for the internal taking care of internally in T-PAC. But that night, it was so crowded with parking that a lot of us, council people and staff, had to go park around the front. There was not enough police there. We were walking by ourselves in the dark all around. So I'm just saying that coming upon doing the exterior corrections, not just for council people, but for all of us, would behoove us all sooner rather than later. So thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you for that sentiment as well, and I'm sorry for your fault. I heard about it as well, so I wanted to tell you that personally, so finally seeing you face to face to tell you that. To my knowledge, before I got here, I heard of a lawsuit of some sort with somebody falling down those same steps that T-PAC endured the lawsuit. But no, I think it is time to get those steps fixed so nobody else will have their horrific fall again because that's horrible. But I think something about the historical landmark committee or something to that magnitude has a lot to do with those steps and the way they designed and the reason why we can't necessarily fix. I don't know all the pros and cons of it, but I think we need to probably think about design change. If we're going to keep putting salt on top of it and just keep eating away at the interior of the steps, so.
Councilwoman Hofer, did you have a comment?
I had a quick question, something that hasn't been mentioned. What is the timeline on finishing the HVAC for T-PAC?
We fight that fight every day. I can yield to somebody else for that because I couldn't give you a definite.
I'm wondering if it's this year or if we'll be stretching into next.
I believe it's another six months to get the whole project done, City Hall and T-PAC.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to say something. Yeah, I don't want to keep beating this horse about the lighting, but for a long time now, I usually park on that east side when we could and I would comment with the officers, we've got to get some lighting done over here because somebody's going to fall. And it just didn't get done until unfortunately had an unfortunate accident. But I would suggest too, and I don't know whether that's already been done, but as you look at increasing the lighting, I know for a while there, especially with Safe Streets and the Police Department, when they were doing something like this, they would use and incorporate what they call SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And what they would do is make an assessment, not just of those steps, but of the grounds around it and everything because it really has to be an inviting place for everybody who's coming to those events. And so I don't want to get so focused on the steps that we forget about everything else. So the steps certainly, but I think overall, there's a need for a lot more ground lighting. There are a lot of nooks and crannies along the building that want people to be hiding in them.
So Ms. Ortiz, you will see it when we do get ready to come before you on the committee meeting. I put in there for Hardscape too, to try to do some upgrades around the building, to try to see if we can help do our part in helping you guys changing some of the landscaping opportunities around there to make it more pleasing on the eye. We had Eddie Griffin here in town on May the 11th, and that was one of the things that he said. He said, you know, he travels nationally. He said, hey, man, I like your venue. I love the way that it looks on the inside, but you guys, you know, let's do something on the outside because I think he was having a problem finding the place. He said that he didn't even know that we were the place to come to. And I said, no, you know, it says to people performing arts outside, he was like, yeah, but I could barely see the sign. You know, I said, well, we're going to get that fixed. So anyway, you got national attention on yourself now, well, we all do because I'm part of this fight too. So it just makes me feel good to hear you guys wanting to change because that's where it starts, it starts with us. And I'm here to fight too. So whatever you need from me, whatever you need from the president and the entire board, we here, we here too, man. So whatever you need, just let us know.
Okay, Councilman. Shed some light on the subject. Councilman.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just for everyone, I guess, including you all from T-PAC. I'm just glad to hear this discussion, this, all the work. That building is ours and you're our tenant, if you will, so I'm really pleased to see this moving along. You may not be at a point where you can give us the details, but if I heard it right, that 800,000 is less than five times 300 and something, which sounded really good to me as far as what we had done on the CIP. And my understanding is that you all are working with KBS and with Mr. Tryon, as you touched on, to see if you can't, maybe that 800,000 includes economizing by getting some of that work done while the walls are already torn up. And I just wanted to say I appreciate that and hopefully finance and public works can work with you on that so that A, it's far less expensive and B, it's done.
Thank you for that. That means a lot. So thank you.
Well, thank you for being here and thanks to the members of the board who showed up this evening for this presentation. That way they get to hear straight for themselves what we're concerned about. I appreciate their presence here.
I just want to say one last thing before I go before I say too much. Just thank you guys for real because I've been in other cities working and you guys get it right. You know, you guys care about your community. You guys do a lot of fighting, but it's fighting for the right cause, you know, and I like that, for real, I do. I like how you guys roll up your sleeves and you get to work. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you Shane.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, third presentation.
Mayor and governing body, the next is Fawn Mosher, who is deputy director of the Topeka Zoo, who will give an annual update.
Are you going to put that on there? Okay, so thank you for asking us to speak. We've had a pre-eventful year into last year and this year. So I wanted to let you know, so what's new, the biggest thing that was new in 2023 was the opening of Giraffe and Friends. It opened in March on the 10th and it was a kind of a cold winter day, but for spring, but we had a great crowd and it was a great, great turnout. So we moved the giraffe 55 years later from the building that was the first original building in the zoo. So as you can see, Hope, who was born in 2010, was the rock star that actually changed the zoo moving forward. And so she, you can see that she's on the left. Sarge actually came a few years later. He actually, both of them are the parents for Liz. And then Daisy actually is a new giraffe that arrived in April of last year. She came from Florida. The easiest way to tell her apart is she looks like she has a tan compared to all the rest of them. So the hoof stock actually were what we refer to as the friends, so giraffe and friends, and these are the giraffe's friends. But the community actually was the other part of what friends means. So by their support and by the city's support, we were able to complete the project. The cranes actually live with the giraffes. We are currently in the stage of introducing everybody still together. It's a long process with, especially the gazelle that basically probably come up to my knee, which is still pretty short for anything because of how tall I am, you know. So anyways, so the giraffe, or the gazelle, because they actually can't see outside into the hoof stock area from the stalls and the yard, it does actually take a little bit longer. So we're actually moving along with that. Some of the other big areas is that we introduced a lot of new carnivores to the zoo. So these are two of our new tigers, Nisha and Thomas. Thomas was actually pretty famous for being in the tub and had a lot of likes for that. Some other carnivores that we received were two new otters that joined Albert. So you can see Bruce and Crush. They were actually named after the sharks in the movie Nemo. And then we received a new orangutan. Her name's Kaylee. It looks like it might be chopped off just a little bit, but K-A-L-I. She actually came from the Kansas City Zoo. She's young, likes to play with the little orangutan. And then the one that, Boomi, that was born in February about eight years ago, they're about the same age, so they like to play. Another animal that received is Tatoo. He is a lion, obviously you can tell that, but he's an African lion and he is getting along great with our female lion. So he's about four years old and she's 20. And so the huge age difference, but he was very patient and she actually is actually in charge of the exhibit, so he is very respectful of that. So we celebrated our 90th year and we had a great year. We actually celebrated it as a free day for the community. And you can see this is staff and docents that actually, you can see all of our shirts, but we made a pretty big deal and celebrated it both with the community but also staff. We saw 255,757 people last year. Zoo Lights was our fourth year and you can see that we had over 55,000 people join us. The Golden Lion Terrance received a new exhibit, so their, this is probably not the right way to say it, but they had like a shoebox and now they have a very large space and it has vertical and it complements the new space that they received the year before inside. We also made it so that the guests could actually press their nose to the glass and so that they feel more immersed with the animal, but then also it created more space for the animal instead of all the barriers that you have to put up. Right now, we currently are receiving animals for the rainforest. You can see some of the animals that came in, lots of birds and a new bat. And then right now, the biggest thing going on is Sean Kenny's Animal Superpowers, made with Lego bricks, presented by Giant Communications. I think what was more fascinating for me was the unloading of them where I got to see and learn all the hidden secrets of how they made the Legos. So if you want to know that sometime, you can pop by the zoo. I can't put them on air. So right now we are in the schematic design, moving into the design development for the next master plan project that's referred to as My World. It actually takes, engulfs the whole entire center of the zoo. It's about 4.2 acres that we're going to change, enhancing someplace that you can sit and eat, new entry, new animals, and then lots of amenities that involve that process. And you can just kind of see some of the things. So we're celebrating year 50 for the rainforest. It opened in 1974 and we're going to celebrate that on June 22nd. And then here's some of the animals. So this is the first waterfall in Kansas. It happened to be built in the building, but it's still something you can say. The rainforest actually is referred to where I hatched basically because that's where I started when I first came to the zoo just a few years ago. And then we're going to be celebrating year five for Zoo Lights. So Zoo Lights each year is a very special event. The first year that we opened it was through COVID and it was actually really, really moving to see families meeting for the first time in an open park and exchanging gifts at Zoo Lights. And so it became very, very special to the staff and we're continuing that memory. So year five has, we have a new Zoo Lights manager that started last year and he is very, very innovative and so this year is actually probably going to be, you know, the best year because last year was the best year too. So each year is the best year. We have our new chief executive officer. She's actually at the very back today. Her name is Christina Castellano. She is, this is day two for her. We haven't scared her away yet, so so far we're doing good. And then that's it. This actually, this photo was taken at Roar and For through part of the rain and it was a rainbow that went right over Camp Calabunga, so it's actually pretty neat. So that's it. You guys have any questions?
Christina, could we come up? If you could introduce yourself to the governing body, they'd be more than glad to meet you.
Well, thank you very much for having us here today. And as you say, my name is Christina Castellano and it is day two. But I have said to everyone that I've met so far that I feel very much at home in our new neighborhood, in our zoo and in Topeka, and I can't thank everyone enough for their warm welcome. And I'm incredibly excited about all the things that Fawn mentioned, especially about the future and our continuing service to our community. I'm really excited to be here. Thank you very much.
Welcome to Topeka. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Hey. Fawn? Just curious question. Zoo Lights is one of my favorite events there. How many volunteer hours go into that? And do you have an idea? I know that there are different businesses or preparations in Topeka that provide volunteers for that. I'm just curious about that because it's a whole community thing.
Yes, so we actually start wrapping, we actually kind of started wrapping already, but we really kick it off in July and then we are wrapping almost right up to Zoo Lights and testing. And we actually work with many local businesses that actually need volunteer hours or that just want to come outside and help. So it's a lot of wrapping trees when we get our displays in, which we refer to as frames. So it's putting rope light on them and then it's putting everything out, running cordage, which is not everyone's favorite to do, but wrapping lights is more fun. So we, I don't remember the number that we have, but we are well over 200 volunteers besides our volunteers for the zoo itself, helping with making sure that it's successful. So it is very community-driven. The last years, it actually, I call them elves, so the volunteers are elves, but also the companies that participate and provide their skill and trade to help us.
Okay. Councilman Calvin and Councilman Dover.
Mainly I just want to say it's been amazing what you've done, the zoo's done over the last five to 10 years. It's beginning to more of just an overall attraction rather than just a zoo. There's the Zoo Lights, there's the Roar and For, there's all these other just little events going on. Bringing in attractions like the Lego exhibit just brings it out more. And I used to go all the time when my daughters were little, but it's been a nice place for me to take my family over the years. I was able to take my step grandmother there. The last time she was there was before the rainforest was there. So it was really neat to kind of let her walk around and kind of see the memories flood back for her. So to me, it's a great family spot in Topeka and I really enjoy that you guys have taken it from just being, here's some animals to here's a whole bunch of events and different things going on to make it more a family event space for Topeka's.
We have a great team and it takes actually all of us in order to make that happen, but we have great community support and if we didn't have that, we wouldn't be as successful as we are. But thank you.
Councilman Dover.
How long are the Zoo Lights up?
It is 42 days. It's a 42-day event.
I was just curious, the other days, could we maybe put them around the steps in front of?
We'll work on that. We can bring some over now.
Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things, one's a comment, one's a question. And I made this comment, I was on the zoo board and four years prior and it's fine, no one's going to do it, but. But it'd be nice if Zoo Lights could be opened an additional week and I understand why. There's issues with volunteers and staff. I, I get that. I do think you'd see a pretty good bump in attendance around that New Year's time, you know, from, from Christmas. But I do understand the logistics involved. I mean, I had those conversations, but I'll still say it every year. If there's any way to make it happen, um, that would be great. Actually, I've, my second comment is, before my question, I've advocated for this. I will continue to advocate for it. Again, as you look at memberships, prices every year, I believe, and I still think that once the citizens pass the sales tax, that citizens of Shawnee County should get a discount rate when they go to the zoo, whether it's on their season memberships or whether it's on their entrance fee, because they are not only paying for it in other ways, as it's a city asset that we still own, they're also now have, have given up additional dollars, which have been great. But through sales tax, when they make purchases, it'd be nice to reward that in some way for Shawnee County residents to get a discount when they enter the zoo. So again, that's something I've asked for, for many years. We have someone new here, it's the first time she's heard it. So I will put that back out there one more time. My last thing is just a question. Um, is there any sort of preliminary timeline right now on the My World project or where it's at in its stages of development?
Uh, so, um, we, so last year we spent the, I'm just going to call it the brainstorming session. And so we spent that, created what we want, um, to, what we were hoping to do. Um, right now we are, uh, doing geo surveys. So that basically, uh, tells us what's underneath and what we need to shift. We're also looking at certain trees. So we're shifting our site plans slightly from what we came up with at the end of the year. And so in about the end of July, we should start the construction documents. So we are in a fundraising stage as well at this time. And, uh, we'll, well, actually I just kind of, I guess, announced it that we're doing it, but it's okay if I tell everyone. Um, so then when we're 50% fundraised, we will actually make a really big splash about My World. And then at 85%, we'll, uh, put, uh, fundraise, we'll actually, uh, put shovels in the ground. And then the goal is to be done and open the fall of 2027. Sometimes construction and weather doesn't always cooperate with timelines. So this is what happened with Giraffe and Friends. We were done, um, but winter showed up, so we did our grand opening of the exhibit the following year. So that's the timeline, that's the goal.
Thank you.
Councilman Banks.
Well, good evening, Fawn. Uh, for many years, uh, the fire department, as his education person, uh, we did, uh, extinguisher training for the fire, from the fire department to the zoo.
Yep.
The funnest group to work with.
Yep.
Always appreciative and I appreciated that. My question is, I'm wondering if the fire department still have that relationship with the zoo?
We have a great relationship with the fire department as well as the police department. So we do drills with them. So we, we talk about scenarios or we do, uh, action drills. Um, we have, we also have a safety consultant now so that he actually does training with us once a month. And so we, we work with the fire department, but we also work with that safety consultant.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Hillary.
Fern, I loved your phrasing. You were hatched, did you say?
Yeah, yeah. That's where I started, is in the rainforest.
In the rainforest? And when was that?
Um, so I have been with the zoo since 1986.
That's been a while. I just wanted to thank you for your ser- your spirit and your service.
Thanks.
The zoo has done well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Move on to agenda item five, the consent agenda. Oh, oh, that's right. Richard, did you have something you wanted to add on the end of presentation?
I did, I did, Mayor, governing body. Um, I'd like to ask Director Davis to come up and give you a update on Polk Quincy.
Good evening, surprise. I, I thought I might start out and just say, you know, when you live in the world of utilities, you never know what email or what issue is going to be the hot button item of the day. So, um, things work fast and furiously and there's a lot of coordination that has happened and continues to happen on the Polk Quincy Utilities Relocation Project. And, um, because of that, we are doing our best to get the word out and working with Councilwoman Hofer today on some correspondence. Uh, she really wanted us to come give you guys a quick update so you can help us spread the word. We are specifically, at last, um, public infrastructure meeting, I gave a presentation on all of the projects and, and where they're at and schedule. And tonight, we're just simply talking about the traffic plan for project number five, which heavily impacts First and Kansas. So I'm just have three more slides after this intro. Little bit hard to see. We just threw these together and we're still making edits right before I came over tonight. But, um, the biggest takeaway is things are going to continue to change and they're going to impact everyone and we are doing our best to keep Kansas Avenue open. The original construction plans called for a complete closure of First and Kansas and closure to the bridge in its entirety. Uh, so working to try to keep that open, uh, our staff and public work staff has really been working well together and, and editing traffic plans as the contractors are out there, um, telling us their needs for the phases of the projects that they're working on. So right now, um, the biggest takeaway is, starting next week, for the next month, so through the middle of July, the official detour from Kansas Avenue Bridge is going to be on Topeka Boulevard. So we're going to be asking folks, um, the red lines, it's, this map is harder to see. I'm hoping the next two will be easier to see. But basically, we're going to take you, um, from Kansas Avenue in North Topeka, over west on Morse and then south on the Boulevard. So you see my, um, match line because this image is too big to put on one slide vertically. Um, then you're going to go south and if you're southbound, you're going to be cutting over on Fifth Street to continue on Kansas Avenue. Conversely, your opposite of that, if you're going north on Kansas Avenue, you're going to head west on Fourth and then go over the Boulevard Bridge so that you can tie up back to Kansas Avenue again in North Topeka. So that is the official detour. That's going to be the detour for heavy truck traffic, buses, semi, school buses, um, large traffic. Uh, next slide is going to be the traffic plan that has been developed for, um, small passenger vehicles. This is our effort to continue to maintain that bridge and leave it open so that people can still have access, um, to and from North Topeka from downtown. So the blue line that you see there with the hatching over it, that's the water line and the work that is being done and, and impacted. So you see what a big, um, area that we're covering with that work is. So, uh, just to be specific, we are going to take traffic, again, small passenger vehicles, cars, trucks, nothing bigger than a small box truck, down Kansas Avenue Bridge. And then you can only go east before you then turn south and, and get to wherever you're needing to go. And then vice versa, if you're, if you find your way to First Street, you're going to go west on First Street and then continue north on the Boulevard. So this is, again, small vehicle traffic. Um, staff has, has really worked hard to try to make sure we're clearly marking all of these, um, areas and the changes. We're having new stop signs installed that have, uh, lights on them so that, um, we get as much identification of these changes as possible. And then the next slide will show you the pedestrian traffic. We really want to help move people out of this construction site and out of all of these vehicles that are trying to find their way on the bridge. So, um, you'll see the arrows going back and forth for people coming north or south. Um, they will go north on Quincy. If you're coming from the south, you're going to go west on Crane. Under, so that is under the bridge. Then you're going to go south again so you can hook back up to the bridge because the pedestrian traffic on that bridge is on the west side. And then if you're coming from North Topeka and you're already on top of the bridge on the west side, you're going to go south, hook around, then go back north so you can hook up under the bridge, go east again on Crane and south to Third Street. So this is, um, a, it seems so simple, but it has been a lot of coordination effort to make sure that we're complying with traffic standards, traffic engineering standards, um, working with the emergency services personnel. How can we continue to maintain this for them? And then working with, um, the metro and other folks to help communicate this. Last slide, last but not least, um, we did talk about this briefly at the Public Infrastructure Committee and we've mentioned it a couple of times, but everybody's best friend Travis has really helped us work, uh, on this map that shows our project highlights and the detours. So if you go to topeka.org, the city's main, um, homepage, in the middle, there's some black boxes. And if you click on the road closures, you're going to come to this map. This map is a little confusing. It's not even updated yet. There's, there's one error on here that we need to, maybe two, just because again, this is changing on the fly. So Travis will come in in the morning probably and find some edits that we have to make. But this is going to help people identify where those road closures are and where the detour routes are for all of the city's major traffic impacting jobs, um, projects. This information is also plugged into Waze, which helps get it to Google Maps. So if people are putting their destination into their GPS system, it's going to give you updated detour information on the fly. So, um, it, it is, we're doing our best again to try to communicate this out with everybody. Um, I think Councilwoman Hofer, more than any of us perhaps, feels the pain of this because she drives this every day and, and is trying to get people over here as well. So, um, she has not hesitated to give us feedback and we hope the same from all of you, honestly. We, we need that impact, we, we need that, uh, information back. So please don't hesitate to do that. Uh, and, and I say that in a very kind way, actually, because it's been very helpful.
Good. Questions? Councilman Duncan?
Two questions. Um, and I, you may not know the answer to this, but we could ask. I know KDOT has some avenues they push stuff out on. Be nice if we could send this to them and say, please also push this out because different people look at their stuff than our stuff. My question is, the people who are down in that area who have trucks coming and going or ha- have their own trucks or t- delivery, no to tell those folks. Is there going to be specific signage to let some truck that, you know, hey, don't come down here if you're not bigger than a box truck? Semi who's off, who thought this was a shortcut or something to that effect? So they don't get, you know, whatever problem that could create if they go down that path?
It's probably going to cause some problems. We're doing our best. They're going to have as mu- there's not a lot of verbiage you can put on signs, right? But they are trying. Uh, again, um, some of this information is pretty fresh. This email started yesterday about the contractor wanting to make this closure early next week. Um, so we're still working with the traffic engineers and trying to see what other things we need to do to help convey that message. So we'll go back and look at what other items. I, I can't tell you if, um, we have message boards or not, but we'll get that message out somehow.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Councilwoman Hofer, did you have?
Oh, wait a minute.
Okay. Councilwoman Hiller.
Um, I'm not sure you've addressed quite yet. We, we talked about this a lot and at the hearings, this is my district, so I've lived this. But we, I think it is important to keep people out of the whole district if you can. We talked about that before, you know, and if there's ways to, to do signage out at Sixth Street that just says, don't go there, go all the way to the Boulevard. It, it's a little unclear from this map, yet if I gather from what you're saying, it's semis go on Fourth and Fifth and Topeka Boulevard only. Cars can sneak around on First Street and can go across the bridge. And pedestrians are going to have to go way out of their way, but they can come across the bridge.
Correct.
It, when you, when your other ones show the water lines, it goes right down Quincy Street, but it doesn't show that Quincy is blocked for vehicles. And so.
Right.
I'm not sure whether it is or not. I know we talked on all these about Google. So Google will now put that construction into GPS?
Braxton's team and, uh, Travis and, and his coworkers, um, our TSG staff have really been working hard for quite some time, far before the Polk Quincy project, um, to try to make sure we're getting that communication over so that it's being picked up.
That is huge. I mean, the, the understanding we had was that Google was just slow at that and you couldn't hope for it. So that, that will, we're sure that that's what was behind some of the things going through Popwin even on First Street before and so on.
I remember major traffic, and that's our biggest emphasis right now, full road closures and things like that. Um, if we have some smaller projects out there, it's, it's probably not going to be quite as up to date.
Well, and, and what's, I know that you have direct contact information for each of those businesses from the hearings and so on. How are you going to let them know or have you already?
Some of them have been part of bigger meetings with our engineers and, and project managers.
Gas service, I hope.
Um, well, we have a long list today and we're going down that to see who we've contacted and who we haven't. And again, how can we make sure we get those, that word out? If we've missed someone, we want to try to go back and, and hit them as best we can. Um, we really rely heavily on our traditional method because we're doing this every day all across the city, right? Um, this one is complicated because of all the other projects in the same area and there's a lot of conflicts there. But because we have a system with our communications team and we're rolling out those traffic impacts and we have distribution groups that get the updates from, uh, our traffic engineers and public work staff. And we re- we rely really heavily on that. So anytime we can help update distribution lists and things of that nature, that's going to be helpful on all of the, um, public works and utilities projects to help convey those messages through email and through those more efficient routes rather than trying to rely on face-to-face, door-to-door knocks. Um, that just gets, uh, when we're moving so quickly and some of these routes change week by week, um, we're, that is not very efficient for us. However, um, like we said, we, we did make sure that we sent postcards out to all of those groups to, when the projects were first, um, being laid out. And, and now we hope that we can maintain some of those relationships and, and we know, we don't want to say there's any one priority over the next. Um, we, there's some other moves being made down there with other businesses. And, and again, we're all trying to punt as, as these things come at us. But, uh, anytime we can get, if, if you guys hear of anybody that's been left off that communication chain, please let us know so we can make sure we do better next time. Um, like I said, Councilwoman Hofer has actually given us a, a laundry list of people to consider to make sure that we've hit them.
If, if I could ask you to clarify again, because all, everybody uses that. It's First Friday on Friday night, you know, all kinds of people.
Yes.
And we have all kinds of people coming downtown, so it's not just the people in the district. If people wanted to look for one place to find out the latest, could you describe again, whether that's the front page of the website or a public works? Where could, where could the, anybody look and find out?
Anybody can go to www.topeka.org. And right in the middle of the home screen, there's a black banner that has four or five boxes and one of them in the middle says road closures.
Okay.
Um, you can also do topeka.org backslash utilities backslash PQV. That is where you're going to find all of the specific project information for those Polk Quincy Utility Relocation Projects. However, that homepage, when you go to the road closures, that's going to give you all of the detours for those other projects as well. So River Road and, and those other major projects that are also in the same vicinity.
Thank you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Um, thank you to Councilwoman Hofer for, uh, putting this presentation forward. You know, I can't, I'm not even, um, Director Davis going to try to understand the complexity of this, but what I can tell you is I think we need to do better with our messaging because we have to understand, not everybody has access to jump on a computer and look. Not everyone has access to look at their GPS. A good example is my husband's boxing club. He has a Parkinson's disease po- boxing club two days out of the week and these are elders and they come from outside of the urban core and within the urban core. And two of them were saying today that the myriad of detours to get into East Topeka, which I know some of it is utility, some of it is not. I've men- made mention of this to Braxton. I don't know what other way that we can do. We have to understand we have an older population that does a lot of driving and isn't going to be looking at a GPS as they're trying to figure out how to get across Topeka or into the urban or out of the urban core. I don't know if it's going to be, you know, putting things in the newspaper. I don't know if there's. I don't know if there's going to be, you know, you spending more time or your crew or public works or whatever on the couches of the different, you know, shows, but, and I understand that some of this is not you at all because it's KDOT. So, but, you know, you're here sitting in the seat, so you're going to hear it, but we have to do a better job of messaging. Because for those that live in this urban core that deal with this every day, it's a hot mess. So, thank you.
Absolutely. We hear you loud and clear. Again, we understand, especially with the pedestrian traffic under there and the variety of services that people are visiting in this area. We have a lot of foot traffic. We know we have a lot of cyclists as well. So those are all things we're trying to make sure we can get as many directional signs and things of that nature to help. So if you find yourself in the middle of it, we can help guide you through it.
If you need us to come out and hand paint signs that are not in UTCD approved and just put them up, we'll do it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hofer?
Okay, I want to reiterate to you now this. The maps that you saw are version three. We're getting ready for version four. So this is, a lot of things have been thought about.
Sorry. A lot of things have been thought about and worked on, and we're going to continue to work on it. And I know people will get down in my business neighborhood, and they're going to go, where do I go? My guys know this is coming, and so we're going to help direct people. There is one other project that's making a slight change. It's project number three. And I noticed today on my way home, the ramp that is on to westbound 70 from First Street, they're going to shift from the ramp that's been there for, I don't know how many decades, over to the south a little bit. They were putting in the asphalt road today. That happens on Friday, I believe.
Yes, ma'am.
So there's going to be people down there that are going to kind of wonder what's going on, but everything's shifting on a regular basis down there. And so I'm trying to stay ahead of it. I've got an email list of my neighborhood businesses that eye contact, just so they know what's happening on a regular basis. They probably open their email and go, oh, God, what now? But I'm trying to stay ahead of them and make sure that we don't have anybody who gets in a mill of a hiss, like a truck in a place they shouldn't be, that they can't even really back up. We're trying to avoid those kind of problems. And I do know that there are trucks that are avoiding going on the viaduct, and they are coming down through downtown. So if you see a truck downtown, please be patient with them. We're just going to have to work our way through all of the traffic and the detours and everything happening. So this was kind, this was very important to me when it started coming out yesterday, and I didn't understand the full range of it until I read it a few times. So I want you all to be aware, and whoever's watching, to know that it's going to be a orange cone summer big time. And please be patient with us and be patient with the guys that are working there. Watch out for them. I don't want anybody to get hurt. I don't want any accidents. I want us to get through this clean and move on to the next phase, which is actually not that far away.
It's really not. And to Councilman Duncan's point, anything that we're learning through this effort, we then will pass on to KDOT so that we can help get their messages out when they start working on their jobs, which are going to impact us probably even more than we are experiencing now. So.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sylvia, I think it's a good suggestion that whatever avenues you have to communicate these changes, that you avail yourself of those, including our communications director as well splitting that out. I know that you'd probably be a welcome guest on any of the news stations and some of the radio stations. I know that takes you away from your desk.
Yeah.
But saying it once or twice is not going to be enough for people. They're going to need to hear it on a regular basis and the ongoing updates and the cautionary things that they need to hear about, you know, somebody getting hurt, either a worker or pedestrian or a car accident inadvertently by not knowing which way to turn left or right. So
Absolutely.
Please avail yourself of those. Councilwoman Hofer?
I forgot one thing. Because the Fiesta is coming up, this will probably impact, I think it's the parade, and they're already working on that, trying to make sure that the parade flows smoothly and starts in a spot, it may be slightly different from last year, but they are working on projects like that. So they are thinking ahead and trying to get things thought out and in the, to the people that need to know.
Yep, absolutely. There's a couple parades coming. So again, we're, we really appreciate people reaching out and saying, hey, don't forget about this and don't forget about that. So we welcome that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's a good addition, Richard. I'm glad you brought it up tonight.
Governor, governing body.
Any other presentations?
No, that's it.
Okay, just want to make sure. We'll move on then to Agenda Item Five, the Consent Agenda. If the clerk will read.
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sylvia Ortiz granting Randy Wheat an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945150 at Seek concerning noise prohibitions. B is an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstedt allowing and approving city expenditures for the period March 30th to April 26, 2024, enumerating said expenditures therein. C are minutes of the regular meeting of May 21, 2024. And D are applications, which are serial law applications, which they're listed in front of you, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay. You've heard the consent agenda, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Cal, second. Second by Councilwoman Ortiz. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Keller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
And Dobler?
Yes.
We have nine yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Motion carries, we move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Action Items. Madam Clerk?
A is a resolution introduced by Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler recommending approval of project numbers, number 601133 Phase 5 and 291128 Phase 2 for alley repair in 1800 block between Lincoln and Buchanan, Reasending Resolution Number 9497.
Okay, Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, governing body, Braxton Copley, your Public Works Director will address this project.
Good evening, governing body members. We're seeking approval of a project. This is for the reconstruction of the alley, including replacement of a sanitary sewer in the 1800 block between Lincoln and Buchanan. This was in front of you about a month and a half ago. You approved it. We put it out to bid. Unfortunately, none of our bids came in within the engineer's estimate. We've taken another look at that, realized that we were a little optimistic in terms of the numbers that we had for the sewer in the alley. We've adjusted those accordingly and are seeking your approval. Total project budget of $400,000, 180 of which is for the alley. 220 is for the sanitary sewer replacement, which is a 116-year-old 10-inch VCP. Councilmember Ortiz, I apologize, you were correct. This is a 2023 Dreams Two project.
Okay. Any questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
I will accept your apology. Mr. Mayor, with that, I will make an approve. Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, second by Councilman Dobler. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Keller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
We have nine yes. Motion carries.
Motion carries, we move on to Action Item 6B. Madam Clerk?
B is a resolution introduced by Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, Neil Dobler recommending approval of project 841060 Phase 27 for street improvement at the intersection of Southwest Winger Road and Southwest 57th Street.
Again, City Manager?
This resolution is brought to you by Braxton Copley, Public Works Director.
Governoring body members, we're seeking approval of a project for the reconstruction of the intersection of Winger and 57th. The resolution that you approved adopting the CIP requires any project over $250,000 to have your approval. We are being completely transparent. Our project budget estimate for this is $25 below that. We are, we are at 24975. We, out of abundance of caution, we're asking for your approval of this because my fear is that we will have a change order on the project that would cause us to go over and technically be in violation. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. We'd ask your approval.
Okay. Madam Ortiz, Councilwoman, oh, who? Oh, I didn't see you, sorry. Councilman Banks?
Not a question, Mr. Mayor, just a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Banks. A second?
Second.
Thank you, my Councilman Dobler. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Keller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
We have nine yes. Motion carries.
Motion carries, we move to Action Item 6C. Madam Clerk?
C is a resolution introduced by Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler recommending approval of project 841091 Phase 2 and 501106 Phase 5 for streets and stormwater improvements in the Summerfield neighborhood.
City Manager?
Mayor, governing body, Braxton Copley, who is still your Public Works Director, will review this item with you.
Great. Thank you, governing body. Excited to bring this project forward because I, along with Councilmember Dobler, have been at neighborhood meetings for Summerfield for the last two years. I'm really excited to get this one moving. This is $3.3 million of improvements in the Summerfield neighborhood. 1.2 million of that is for street, and 2.1 million is for storm sewer. We have a lot of failing corrugated metal pipe in that neighborhood. We have streets that range in PCI, mostly in the 30s and 40s. This will be an impactful project, and we would ask for your approval.
Okay. Questions for Braxton? Councilman Dobler?
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, second by Councilman Banks. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Keller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
And Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
We have nine yes. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries, we move to Agenda Item Seven, non-action items. Madam Clerk?
A is a discussion concerning parking of vehicles on residential property.
Mr. City Manager?
This is a ordinance that Councilman Dobler asked for about prohibiting, if you drive down the street, you'll see cars parked in the front yards of homes. And this ordinance would prohibit that.
Well, likewise.
Maybe. Councilman Dobler?
Yeah, I'll just preface this quickly and then turn it over to the city attorney. I had a constituent that has complained, has filed complaints on numerous occasions, cars parked in the neighborhood on the grass, and found out that we weren't able to enforce the existing ordinance, not that one didn't exist before this. And so from here on, I'm getting out of my area of expertise. I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
Okay. Thank you so much, Councilman Dobler. It's nice to be back in person here.
Yes.
So as Councilman Dobler said, a constituent had raised this issue, and when he emailed me on it, I said, well, this is perfect timing because we keep hearing the exact same complaint, and we have an idea of how to fix it. So our existing ordinance was unique in how it was written. Normally, when you get a traffic citation, you think about the driver, right? Like, where did the driver park? What choices did they make? How did you get a traffic citation? And you cite the driver of the vehicle, the registered owner who's driving the vehicle. This statute was unique in that it did not actually cite the person that parked there or the owner of the vehicle. It cited the property they parked on. And so you can see how quickly that would break down if you had like a rental property, for example, and the owner of the property is not the renter. And it was written in a way that said you would cite them if it was either they were the ones that parked it or they allowed a vehicle to park. So the owner comes to court and says, well, I didn't allow them to park there. I told them not to. And then you very quickly can prosecute almost nobody for this offense. And so the way the ordinance was written was that you can not park in a backyard for longer than six months, and you can't park in the front at any time unless it's on gravel. So what this ordinance does is it puts it more in line with every other traffic violation that we have, and we cite the person who actually parked there. And so that is the significant change. While we were at looking through this ordinance, there is an additional change. If an ordinance does not specifically say it applies to a handicap vehicle, it still applies to a handicap vehicle. There's no reason to call out handicap vehicles by name and say, it also applies to you. It automatically does. And so we took that out to make it compliant with the most of our laws. And then we also amended the portion for special events. So for example, when we allow parking in grass in Oakland for the Fiesta, the ordinance was written that said we had to say each specific address that that was allowed at, which is very impractical when you have an entire neighborhood. So we changed how that was written on applications. And those are the changes. Prosecution has reviewed it. They think it is now prosecutable. TPD code, everyone has reviewed this, and staff is happy to support this.
Councilman Duncan, then Councilman Cal?
All right. So since we've opened up the hood, as I read our current, this ordinance, our current ordinance, I can take a car, I can park it in my backyard for six months, and then at that point, I either have to move it or appropriately gravel it or put it up on. That's a really long time. And I think we have many people abusing that, either by not doing it or moving one vehicle out for a different vehicle. I mean, I would really like us to change that to three months if we could. I think that's a little more manageable, still lets people take time to figure out how they want to store their vehicle. So I don't know, if I need to make an amendment next week, I will, or if nobody objects to that and staff can just make that correction, I guess I throw that out there. I'd like to see that be three months instead of six months. Thank you.
Councilman Cal?
So it says owner of the vehicle, which usually we go off registration, but if someone has a non-registered vehicle back there, how are we gonna?
I will double check that, but I think if it's a non-registered vehicle, you would, we have different code provisions where you would cite to the owner of the property if it's an unregistered vehicle, but I will double check that and get an answer back to you before next week.
So when it comes to also, is this just drivable, drivable vehicles, or does it pertain to like RV trailers also?
We have various rules, but they do not generally have to be drivable. That is another complaint we routinely get, is that we can't go back onto the property to see if the car is drivable. John Schardine can probably tell you about all of the various ways people have learned how to show their car is not drivable or prevent you from seeing if their car is not drivable. We get a lot of complaints about cars. This is probably one of our top issues that we get. We get complaints about the six months being way too long. We get complaints about the RVs. We get complaints about burned-out buses. John Schardine's team has been very aggressive working with zoning this year, as well as prosecution, about getting abatement warrants and going in and cleaning these out. They are very expensive to do. We do put those as lanes against the property. But we try to look holistically at it, so it's not just this ordinance. We look at what other ones do we have? If it's an RV, do we need to look at an RV? We do put those as liens against the property. But we try to look holistically at it, so it's not just this ordinance. We look at what other ones do we have? If it's an RV, do we need to look at an RV? Is it a burned out bus? We need to look at safety. We pull in the fire department for fire code stuff. So I'm trying to look holistically at these because these are things that hit my desk every single week with complaints from neighbors that do not like how it makes their neighborhood look.
So then also go, I'm just ideas that are popping in my head kind of thing. Let's say on the timeframe, they bring the vehicle out every day to drive it to, let's say, work, put it back there every day because of the number of people living in the home and the number of drivers. In essence, every single time they drive it out, does the clock restart? Or is this, in essence, if it's parked at any point during the day there, the clock is ticking?
It doesn't restart, so that is why the six months in the back can be very hard to prove because you've got to have the complaints that show that the same vehicle is there. Now on the flip side, normally these complaints are very much by your neighbor driven, so your neighbor is documenting how long your car has been there. But to your point, no, it doesn't, every time it leaves, the clock does not restart. You can't park in your backyard for more than six months without figuring out how to make gravel or figuring out how to make a driveway.
Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Amanda, I had inquired if our code officers could write tickets and they started training on that, and I believe they even started writing tickets. Am I correct?
Correct. They can write a ticket under this offense, yes.
Okay, well, we've stopped for some reason. Is that because?
They came to court and we couldn't prove any of the cases with prosecution and then we realized the error in the law.
Okay, so once this is passed, then they'll go back to writing tickets along with our officers, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Oh, on the backyard, they could still be back there even longer as long as they're on surfaced areas.
Correct.
So is the six months just not, it's always got to be surfaced, right?
Six months on grass, then you have to be surfaced.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I was just gonna comment on.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so that's why, because some of the complaints we've had, I've gotten are people are basically pulling it back there for six months. Stuff grows all around it for six months. And then they either remove that vehicle and replace it with a new one for six months or so if you can't figure out in three months, maybe you don't have the vehicle anymore, right? That was just my thought.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I don't know who can answer this. I don't know if Director Chardine is in the audience or not, but can we go through the process of what this would look like? In other words, if somebody, a code enforcement officer is driving down Lake Street and sees that there's a neighbor that historically does park their truck in their front yard, what happens? Are they immediately, immediate citation or is it, are they given a warning? Help me through that process first and then I have some additional questions.
I don't think John is here tonight, so I'll take a stab at it, but there is discretion. So if you're getting out of the car, the code officer could talk to you and say, hey, you can't park in the grass and ask you to move. They could give you a ticket. A police officer could give you a ticket. They could give you a warning if they're around. So he can give, I can ask him if he can give you an estimate of how often they give warnings versus not. I will tell you for chronic offenders, John's team is talking to them on a regular basis. And so especially it can vary if it's in a backyard versus a front yard. So there is some discretion in that, and I don't know if John has estimates on how often they do warnings versus not initially.
Okay, and also with that, if it's the front yard, and I'm thinking of another address here in District 2, and they have the four inches of gravel, but it's like in their front yard, that's not going to be counted. Is that correct?
Correct. Current policy of the governing body in this ordinance, unless you chose to change that, is that if you park on four inches of gravel, that is allowed.
Okay, and also is both TPD and code enforcement then with this passing going, it's going to be something of, look, you guys, you need to start, no matter what district it's in or whatever, this needs to be part of your established routine to start doing this?
Yeah, I never like to speak for TPD. I'll look back at them, but I do know that this is something that has been very frustrating for code enforcement, so it is a priority for them and they would really like this ordinance to be changed.
And I understand that because there's a heck of a lot in this district on both sides, on both sides of the bridge. At the same time, my only slight concern is that with this historically being a low to moderate income district, what might happen with, I know part of what we're trying to do with changing our culture of property maintenance is not hauling people into court that cannot afford to pay fines versus huge LLCs that have lawyers and have a cache of lawyers and know how to, you know, be dicey with the system and do have the money, right? And how that has been backward with us for some time. So my concern is that what this might do for folks that don't have the money, I think that obviously this is going to be a good, you know, listen, you better start dealing with it, otherwise you're going to get ticketed. So I hope, because again, I'm thinking of changing our culture of property maintenance and how we're doing strong education components, I understand some of the governing body may say, why should we have to educate anybody? But the bottom line is sometimes education components, you know, are a little bit less harsh. But I will, you know, I definitely will end up supporting this because I think it's needed. I just think that moving forward, we also have to be thoughtful in approach on whether it's going to be ticketing, which I could absolutely see for chronic offenders that don't give a damn who it is that's talking to them and they're still going to do it, versus those that may be doing it not as much and just try to have that nuance that I think we're finally starting to build more proactively. I know.
City Attorney. I can think of an address, and I think there are a couple, three people in here who would know what I'm talking about, on Adams. And that residence continually puts vehicles out in their front yard. And not only there, there'll be a number of them in the lot adjacent to that residence. It moves from different kinds of vehicles, boats, whatever. It's like a used car lot, basically. There's no residence on it. It's just a lot that is used as a storage lot or a used car lot, basically. Is that a different citation that can be applicable? Is that zoning more than what we're talking about in the way of parking on grass?
Sorry, I was glancing through the ordinance real quick. This one is specific to residential, so it would depend on how it is zoned. So if it's a residential lot, you could still cite them under this. But we have, as Councilwoman Ortiz has pushed for, been incorporating zoning in code in more frequent conversations together. You know, everybody gets in their lane, right? You think about it as a zoning offense, then you aren't, you're thinking about it as a business that's operating, you're not thinking about the code violations. And if you're in code, you're thinking about it as a code offense, then you aren't thinking about, oh, maybe they're selling those boats in the reserve, reason that it looks like a used car lot because we're constantly turning over cars. So what the goal has definitely been over the last several months is that interconnection of, hey, I've got this problem in property and I can't seem to get anywhere, let me talk to the other side. So I think that collaboration is really good and I think it's going to continue to improve. But it would depend, this is residential property, so if it's zoned residential, there would be ways to cite under this as well as potentially zoning, depending on what they're doing with that, et cetera.
Councilwoman Ortiz, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, as you know, I have several zoning cases, and when, we've got one zoning inspector. She was out sick, and she can only do so much. That's the bottom line, you know? There's, she's one person. And so some of these locations, I have met with the city attorney, prosecution, we've been meeting, and I think we're going to start doing it monthly to see how we can start, start giving them violations. Because, you know, if zoning goes out and they say, well, that's not our problem, that's TPD's, you know, like, let me give you one example. I've got a property at 10th and California, you know, and that zoning's working on that. So now we're trying to bring code in because he can write a ticket to all those inoperable cars. And so I think that's going to help when we bring our team together to see who can do it and how we can do it to get it done. Because when we go like four and five years, that's way too long. That's way too long. And so that way, the prosecutor, she knows this is coming down the pipe so she can flag it. I mean, it's just a collaborative thing because we've had stuff that has fallen off the face of the earth and that Adams property is one of them. So that's, I'll put that on my list with my zoning stuff. And it just helps the team. It just helps the team. And from them understanding and then them trying to find a way as well as code trying to do their jobs. And that's when we started talking about, and code was saying, you know, we go to these NIA meetings and what we hear is, well, we got to get the community officer, we got to get a police officer, we got to get them out here. So code's like, we're there, can't we write tickets? So then I had brought that back to Amanda and that's how we started that conversation. And they want to write tickets because they're tired of hearing it and they're tired of, they're feeling like a piece is not done. So we've been, we've been trying to push that.
Good.
Thank you.
I know there's a concept that I saw when I visited Little Rock, and they used to call them alert centers in the neighborhood. And it was a team of law enforcement, code, and planning. And they operated as a team. They met on a regular basis, took note of those properties that needed to be addressed, and they sped up the whole process in support of everything that you've been trying to do with changing the culture of code. I've often said that sometimes we haven't put all of our resources where our basic problems are, and that's why we have increased the number of code people. Maybe we need to increase the number of people to help support them as well. But thank you for your comments. Councilman Hiller, did you have?
Just a couple, and I'm going to need to go back and read it again because I've lived with this for a long time where there's the police part that's on the street, there's the property maintenance code, which covers inoperable vehicles on the premises, which actually includes the street as well as on the property. And that's not limited to residential. I thought that it wasn't okay to keep a car on unpaved surfaces anywhere. I know that code has been very good in my district about telling some folks anyway that they had to either get pavement in or move their vehicles immediately. So I'm torn. I also know, and to Deputy Mayor's point, you know, when you've got a low mod income family and they manage to get a car for the teenager and it doesn't run yet and they need to bring it home, and then it's going to take a little time to get it fixed, or, you know, something happens to the family car and you got to get it off the street, you got to get it out of the driveway so you can get in and out. I'm inclined to leave the six months, actually, but I will, I'll think about it some more on that. I mean, being reasonable, if we're really enforcing this sort of quilt of other ordinance as well, I was involved in getting the ability for the code compliance guys to be able to ticket, and then the city didn't do it. And I'm really glad to hear that that's happening because it seems a shame to have two departments jockeying around about when one can do it while they're already there. So I'm glad you brought it up and I personally will try and study a little bit more before next week.
Okay. And Councilwoman Ortiz.
I'm sorry, I hate to belabor this, but I called Braxton out. I have a, you know, our streets are narrow, Spencer, and so you can't park in the front because they're so narrow. And in the back was this guy's alley, and then he couldn't, he got cited for parking on the grass in the back because that's all he has was grass. But then he got cited in the front because he had two tires, or a warning, he had two tires on the pavement, and then the other two tires to get out of the street, he had on the grass. Do you remember that, Braxton? And so they asked me to revisit this ordinance because there's nowhere for them to park. And so before we do, before I would even suggest that, we need to maybe come up with something where they're concerned. I have a back driveway, so that helps me. But everybody can't park in the front, and so because we have ditches and our streets are so narrow, it's hard for us to park over there. And so if you pass that, or, I mean, if you pass the six, the six months of no parking in the back, like this guy, he.
Well, that's already on the books.
It's already there. He needs to cut it to three.
But, but I mean, the remedy, we do have the remedy in the law, which says if you're going to basically convert that into your parking, you just got to put gravel down. I mean, the issue that's happening now is people are just dropping vehicles in backyards and things are growing up, they're not moving.
But what I'm saying is, he couldn't even have his, I'll talk to you about it.
He could if he gravled it. We can talk about it.
Yeah, but he had a sewer line going through there, he's saying. It's, it was crazy. It was crazy.
Councilman Banks.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is very troubling to me because my district has a number of moderate to very low-income people. Four inches of gravel may seem minute to most of us, but I know that some of these people, constituents, are running like businesses, they have their equipment parked in certain areas. And if you have a short street like my street, which is Illinois between 35th and 34th, it's very difficult. There are no sidewalks, there are no curves. It's difficult because there's just nowhere to go. Now, my driveway is pretty big, but I know that this is going to present a very difficult situation for many of my constituents. And I'll probably support it because I know it is probably the right thing to do, but I would like for the governing bodies to just think about southeast Topeka's a little different than west side of Topeka. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Duncan.
I'll just make one point. This is already the ordinance.
Yeah.
So, so all we're being asked by staff is to say is, this ordinance has been on the book, we've been basically trying to enforce it for several years. What we've learned is there's a loophole that says we're basically citing the wrong people. So some of these concerns are valid, but unless we're ready to make wholesale changes to this ordinance, you know, which may, which may be where we need to go, not with this. I think we pass this, make sure that code enforcement and law enforcement can keep moving forward, and then take a look at some of those things to see if there's some exceptions we can make or if we need to change our gravel. Maybe it needs to be two inches. I know that sounds silly, but to your point, it does make a difference, you're right. Four inches of gravel is a lot more expensive than two, you know, when you do that. So, so we could take a look at that and as we move forward also at some point.
Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I guess, I get it about the ordinance being in effect, but I think what we're talking about here, what Councilwoman Banks is saying, some hesitation that Councilwoman Hiller has, I'm not speaking for them. What I am saying is I hear they're kind of, mm-mm, you know? And I think the whole thing is, is that what I'm talking about is that how we move forward with code and with PB on pushing this, yes, start doing it. I think that that's where we have to use that, that continued kind of looking at who the chronic offenders are, and just restating again because I think it's important, is who the chronic offenders are and then use that kind of discretion that I think is so important. You know, in the LMI district, there's a lot of movement, a lot of hard work that, you know, John Chardine's crew is doing, like really, really hard work, intentional work. And I think that the majority of the time, they understand that nuance that is needed because of the definite districts that they are in. I would also agree with Councilwoman Banks not, you know, trying to make this, you know, an east side, you know, west side kind of thing. But the reality is, is that when you come into our districts, they are going to look differently than they do than a lot of, you know, how they do in the west side. So it's all good dialogue. I think what we're just trying to bring up is the nuance and the sensitivity of this as we approach that. And that would mean for staff and how it's executed. So thank you.
Councilman Cale.
No, Ms. Stanley, I was, when business got brought up, it made me think, is there anything on the books that keep business vehicles off the city roads, like if they're running their business? Because I have an example of one business pretty much takes up in front of their house and in front of each of their neighbor's houses. It's parking on one side of the street, so that person's taking up a lot of area that their neighbors could be parking on that this might affect in some way. So I wasn't sure if there's anything on the books that.
I would have to look up to verify. My gut says yes, but it depends on what type of business and where it's at and what type of truck. of truck, and what street it's on, if it's a private street or a public street. We get a lot of those kind of complaints about a semi truck, and you have to look at whose kind of street it is and where it's parked.
They're mostly like an F-150, 1500, something like that.
So if you have specific complaints from constituents or specific areas, and if you send them to my office, between me and Deputy Chief Holtham, I'm sure we can figure out a plan of having a look at where it is, and we do that fairly frequently for constituent complaints. So just send them over, and we will, we will like go look at them for you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you. Well, I wanted to, to thank Councilman Dobler. The issue of ownership has been one before. I know that what, what we would get advised was sort of wink, wink, well, we, if it's... I think one of the issues as we test this is, is it an operable vehicle, somebody driving in and out every day, or is it an inoperable vehicle? Because we have different ordinances for both. But, you know, where, where it was inoperable, and, but the, we couldn't find ownership, they would say, well, if you could just get it out into the street, wink, wink, we can pick it up as inoperable on the street. And so we just have to, to look at what the problems have been that we've faced to make sure we've got it all covered.
Okay. Good discussion, a lot to think about. Appreciate it. We'll move on to the next non-action item. Patruch will read.
He has a discussion regarding powers of appointment and removal of the city attorney.
City manager.
Mayor and governing body, this discussion will be led by Amanda Stanley, city attorney.
Okay. This is a charter ordinance that is actually introduced by Councilman Dobler, so if he would like to speak first, I'm happy to yield to him, otherwise I will explain the ordinance.
Yeah, thank you. Maybe I'll preface this again a little bit. I realize I've got three things on here, I'm probably not going to get the attorney's office to respond for a while, but...
We're always happy to help you.
They've, they've done a great job. So if, if you think about it, when we changed the form of government in 2005, we basically put every single hire in the city of Topeka under the city manager, including the city attorney. You look at the way other cities are organized, they're all a little bit different, but a lot of them have some sort of dual relationship between the governing body and the city attorney, and the city manager and the city attorney. And that is for a reason, really. City attorney is, is our legal counsel. The city attorney is also the city manager's legal counsel. And when the city manager and the governing body are at odds, that puts the city attorney in, in a difficult position. So what I suggested to begin with is continue to let the city manager hire and fire the city manager, or the city attorney, but only, only with the approval of the city council. And we went back and forth and interim city manager, and I instead had some good points about trying to find a reasonable balance there. And so I think this, these next two ordinances actually do the same, same thing. So the hiring, based on what we have in front of us, the hiring of the city attorney is with consultation with governing body. It's kind of a fuzzy, I don't know what that really means, but it sounds good. And I think a competent city manager will definitely get input from the, from the governing body with the hire of a, a new city attorney. The item that's in front of us now that we're discussing would actually require the governing body to approve the removal of the city attorney. So it gives the city attorney a little bit of a buffer. Probably 99% of the time, it's not needed, but there will be that, that point in time where the city attorney and the governing body, or the city manager, excuse me, and the governing body could be at odds. We've seen it before several times. And when that happens, there needs to be some assurance that the city attorney will have their job the next day until the issues get resolved. So with that, I'll turn it over to city attorney.
You did explain the ordinance, exactly how it is written, the changes to the ordinance. This is a, for clarification, this is a portion of our charter that can be amended without an election. There are some portions of our charter that cannot be amended without election. That is why the line is in there about the governing body shall not have unilateral removal power. That's because that specifically requires a vote of the people to change that provision. But this would require the city manager give the governing body an opportunity for meaningful input prior to the hiring, as well as the removal. And the city attorney's role is unique. My client's the municipal corporation rather than any one of you individually, it's the body as a whole. Lots of ethics rules go with that, so there's lots of governing of who my client is, and it can get very tricky sometimes. But I will just say personally, like, it's very helpful if you have a good relationship with both your city manager and your governing body. And I think that starts from the very beginning, making sure that you're hiring the right person. So that is the ordinance in front of you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilwoman Kell.
This is something I've actually been thinking about for a while, because I, I think there can almost be that conflict of interest, or, or maybe even pressure put on by whoever the city manager might be at the time. I even thought HR and DEI would be good for this aspect also, because it would allow them to speak freely without having to worry about any repercussions when it comes to, you know, violations that might see that, might get swept under the rug, where they can, they can speak more freely. And I, I'd almost like to see the other two departments kind of almost added into this kind of context here, because there are those instances of conflict of interest, or fear of retribution that would like, would make it easier for, for those departments to be able to come forward in certain aspects, not have to fear for their job or any other thing.
Okay. Councilman Dobler.
Yeah, I understand the sentiment, but I think, I think we have to be very careful about not getting out of our lane, which is setting policy, not managing the city. The only reason this makes sense is because of the legal aspect of the city attorney's job, and who she represents, who he or she represents. And, and once you start going down that path, even though I, I kind of agree, HR director could certainly find himself in the same position, but once you start going down that path, then it's like, well, now how about public works director? And pretty soon, the governing body has stepped across that line that delineates policy from managing the city. So I wouldn't be in favor of that. I'd kind of say, let's do this and see how it, how it works out, and go from there. Thank you.
Councilwoman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, there, there's no position like city attorney and city government. I mean, it is uniquely its own island for a variety of reasons, not just because they sort of represent us both as a council and as a city manager, and then the whole city, because then you've also got issues of confidentiality that come into play, which are a little different than with anyone else on staff. I, I fully support this. Look, any good lawyer is going to do the right thing that they are ethically bound to do, regardless of the consequences, but they shouldn't be put in that position. And I think that's what this addresses. I can give you, I won't tonight, but I mean, there have been several examples here in the state of Kansas in the last year, in which attorneys have been put in very awkward positions, twice where city managers were fired that night by the governing body, and put the city attorney in a very awkward position in that moment, as, as the, both were looking at that person, saying, okay, you're with me, right? Or how are that right? And they, and so there, there's some other examples. So I'm supportive of this, and I think it finds the right balance we need with that individual as we move forward. And I think we saw that, we don't need to rehearse, regurgitate the recent history, but I think we also saw where that would be in play in our own, our own house. So thank you, Mayor.
First comment, discussion? Councilwoman Hiller.
One thing caught my eye, so this is, this is a question, I think, where it says that on, on lines 34 and 35, 36, that the governing body shall have no unilateral removal power of the city attorney if there was a circumstance where there wasn't a city manager, whatever this big upheaval had been. Is that, does that mean that the governing body cannot take that action, that they would have to appoint an interim city manager to take that action?
Our code doesn't actually allow you to never have a city manager, you always have to have a city manager. So if we truly get to the point where we don't have a city manager, we're in trouble that night. You have to appoint someone under our code that night, it can be an employee, it can be somebody else. So that is unique, but yes, that is why. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thank you for the discussion. Move on to the next non-action item.
Yeah, and I can take that one, too, because this is truly just a companion ordinance to the charter ordinance. We have in our code, we like to replicate things a lot at some point, maybe, maybe we could clean some of that up. But as a help to whoever sits in my seat at whatever time, so that you don't miss that there's a charter ordinance that specifically is different, we thought we should make the ordinary ordinance match the charter ordinance, so that there's no, no gaps. And if you go read one, you don't say, oh, I think I know what I'm doing, and you don't know to go look at the charter. So this is making sure that our code matches in both spots.
Any questions for city attorney? Okay. Thank you, Amanda.
No problem.
Okay. We'll move on to public comment. On the agenda, we have three persons signed up.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Jonathan Smith, I live on the east side of the 25, east side of Topeka, 2500 block of Colorado. I've been researching funding for community services and organizations around Topeka and Shawnee County on and off for the last few months. I've actually spoken with quite a few of the members of the core and auxiliary teams from the homelessness task force, while I was looking into our pool of services offered and available locally. I wanted to take a moment and echo Mr. Bill Persinger and Councilman Brett Kell's concerns from a couple of weeks ago, on how we must strengthen our support structures and safety nets in our web of support services, in order to stop letting so many individuals finally step off of that cliff into homelessness. It's a long, hard walk into homelessness, and at this point, we are operating at failure for our impoverished brothers and sisters. There's a fire burning in Topeka, that fire being poverty, and we are buying shovels and rakes to clean up the ashes of that fire, those being the low barrier shelter and tiny home projects. We still very much need those, but we should also be prioritizing funding toward putting out those fires. I'm incredibly proud of the work of the homelessness task force that they put into this issue, and I would just encourage the council to carry through with the application and follow-through of the plan presented by the task force. An additional note on tiny homes, tiny home communities should help quickly raise the housing units in Topeka. As much as people, including our own planning commission, decry our need for the missing middle, what we truly need is rapid influx of housing units. The main driver for our outlandish housing market here is that we simply have not built up enough housing units stock over the previous decades to keep up with demand. Please, 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 commit to the follow-through on these projects and deliver some tangible improvements to those of us in the community with the biggest need. Separately from the conversation on housing services and goals, Shawnee County is one meeting away from banning industrial wind farms, community-run wind facilities, and potentially down the line, personal-use wind turbines moving forward. Additionally, they are also looking to institute a one-year moratorium on industrial or community solar facilities as well. I urge you councilmen and women to have a conversation with our board of county commissioners to find out why Shawnee County is not on the same page as the city of Topeka regarding environmental sustainability policy. And on that note, your sustainability board has a lot to say about this issue, and it would behoove, sorry, it would behoove you to reach out to them as well. The deadline for these conversations is Thursday, June 13th, so do not wait to reach out to your county brothers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Mr. Joe Weir. Joe Weir. And Mrs. Sandra Passiter. Sandra.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Oh, I'm back. And this time, I want to give compliments to the gracious young lady who gave me a call from the water department at our residence to my husband and myself, and she informed us that we had an excessive, not necessarily usage of water, but maybe a leak, which was a good, that was a good term. And so she said, you know, you've had about 200 gallons usage a day, and then now it's increased to 4,000 gallons. I thought, okay. Then we discovered, or we just realized that we have an adjoining house, and that the person next door, which happened to be one of our younger people in our family, they did not notice that the toilet was running. And so landlords and other persons may not realize that sometimes we don't flush that all the way, or we flush it too much, or whatever it is, and it starts running. While we don't often go over there and check on that, because, you know, we're allowing these little people to be independent, but I said, I should check, just one day, it just came to my mind. And as I did, I said, oh, you probably need to fix this, and fixed it. She called me about a week later. What I want to say is, I don't know if I'm supposed to say her name or not, but I will be glad to ask for a raise for her. But what I appreciated about her is, first of all, she was gracious, she wasn't rude, she was intelligent, she was articulate, and then we had this conversation, because she knows I have a conversation with the department about this water reserve stuff, and she said, good, I understand that. But she represents the kind of staff person that can relate to, to me, anyone. And we appreciated what she shared, and we said, we'll take care of the document, and we can talk about the leak and present that in that manner. So I just wanted you to know, I came with a compliment tonight, and then I also had opportunity to speak with the persons about the Dream project, which I'm not going to turn loose. That was, we kind of disagreed agreeably, but I'm an agreeable person, so I said, okay, well, maybe talk a little further about that, but we won't give up. Thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No one else signed up for public comments, and we'll move on to announcements. Madam clerk.
On June 11th, there will be a Topeka Development Corporation Board of Directors meeting that will be held in the city, city council chambers from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. prior to the governing body meeting. You will also have the option to appear via Zoom or in person. On the regular meeting on June 11th, we have four board appointments, we have two presentations, one is the land bank update, and the other one is the 2024 legislative session update. And there is one noise resolution. There is two public hearings for the special assessments, one at 660 Northeast Highway 24, and one at Sherwood Park subdivision. There's also, there will be amending the CIP for the waterline improvement in Westboro. And then there is also three ordinances, and one is the powers of appointment and approval, the, also city attorney appointment and parking on residential property. Also, there's a resolution for the Hotel Topeka bond. And lastly, there is an overview of the review for the city form of government and citizen review committee.
Okay. Thank you very much. City manager.
Mayor and governing body, starting April 2nd, governing body meetings will be held in the Cyrus K. Holiday Building located at 620 Southeast Madison Street, first floor, conference room at 6:00 p.m.
July, July 2nd.
Well, okay, let's go back and...
I mean, I feel like I'm in a...
This is, this is changing ink on this, it kind of changes. And now, miraculously, starting July 2nd, governing body meetings will be held in the Cyrus K. Holiday Building located at 620 Southeast Madison Street, first floor, conference room at 6:00 p.m. As part of the HVAC renovations, the climate control operating, the city council chambers, these chambers, will be shut down on June 24th. We anticipate the chambers will be without heating and cooling for approximately five months.
Oh, jeez. More moving.
I only know what it reads.
So where's, I'm sure this will be out in the world, but court is also in here? They gonna still have it for five months, or?
Court is moving over to T-PAC. Judge Donnie can speak more on that if you'd like more details.
No, I, I mean, I figured, but we probably want to get the word out on that, too, tell people where to go for court.
Considering it'll be the third time in three years, we're pretty well suited to this. I also put it in my weekly report, council member. We'll be moving to T-PAC again, keep the same security entrance, and just do it in the big vestibule entrance to the left of the, where you come in from the court. We've worked it out with Blair, we're looking at five to six months. We'll be able to use the lower courtroom, which will be good. We'll be able to use the lower courtroom, which will be good for trials. The impact will be the clerk's office, because we will not be able to access up here. So I will be moving about 10 clerks to T-PAC, and we'll only have one window to help the public versus three windows. But we'll make some internal changes with the ticket process and set court dates rather than having people come in and do that internally, cut docket sizes a little bit to make it manageable.
Councilman Dobler.
Just out of curiosity, this whole project for City Hall, how closely are we adhering to the original schedule that was set out for it?
We'll have Deputy Director try on, make a presentation of that at the Public Infrastructure Committee meeting. Thank you.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear those wheels. Okay. All right. Deputy Mayor Valdiviacola, announcements?
Thank you. I wanted to bring up something that has, is just extraordinarily troubling and frustrating that happened. I'm not going to name addresses or anything. It occurred in North Topeka where there was a business, a longstanding small business that was broken into early this morning. The gentleman, I am told, had a hatchet in hand. There were no individuals present because of the early morning hours. I talked to both business owners at length this morning about the incident. They first and foremost wanted to give just absolute kudos to the Topeka Police Department because of the number of officers that were present on the scene, because of the nature of the break-in, and this person has been apprehended. My deep concern is that after looking at this individual that was apprehended and doing some research, since at least 2010, this individual has, has had numerous felonies. He was even on the Kansas Most Wanted list for involuntary manslaughter. This individual, I think, is, is still behind bars. And after talking and hearing the frustration of the small business owners, we have been, I have been working with them as a councilwoman for over three years. We have gone to NIAs and spoken of the issues that they've been having. They've invested thousands of dollars because they understand their responsibility as small business owners, invested thousands of dollars in extra security systems. I've had one-on-ones with the chief, old city managers, I could go on and on and on, but it has to do with this revolving door that happens within our system. I understand that the jails are crowded. I understand that we don't have enough mental health beds. I get it. And I'm not even going to go as far as to say that this individual meets that mental health component. What I can tell you is that his rap sheet is excruciatingly long, and he continues to conduct himself in a way where these escapades continue in North Topeka. This revolving door continues and continues and continues. I don't know what we do about it. I don't know if we can sit down as a governing body and have a transparent discussion with whoever we can bring to the table to ask, what are the stark realities that we're looking at within our jail system? Because something continues to occur that creates a decreased level of safety in the district that I represent, and it's not because we're not trying, because we are. We're doing Neighborhood Watch, we're calling our CPOs, we're calling 911, we're having NIA meetings, we're having all of this. But how much can be expected by one elected official and the constituents that he or she represents? Where is that additional help that comes in? Because at this point, the constituents in historic North Topeka West are really feeling that as well because of the, what they believe is the gravity of this situation, because we have been trying to tend to it for so long. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say to Amanda, it's good to have you back in person. You look very well. And I also want to thank staff. I don't know if my colleagues have been up here to City Hall, but there is no air condition, none. They are trying to get packed, they are trying to move to the, so, Neil, I'm glad you asked that question. And staff is not complaining, but it is terribly hot. I'm complaining, because I've been up there packing some stuff. So I just want to thank staff for being patient. Hopefully, it'll be well worth it, because there's an office I seen that I'm not, I'm not happy with. So I don't know how we made these decisions, so I'll have a lot of, a lot of questions. And when the council office moves, there'll be no place for us to go as a council, because it's just a short, a small quarters, and I just can't believe that, as elected officials, that we won't have a space to come in and utilize like we do now. There'll just be a conference room, and I think the city manager will have an office, and, and I think his assistant, and then Liz and his assistant, they will share it. But you guys will see that. But I, I just don't understand why third floor doesn't have air and why second and first floor don't have air if they've already turned it off, because our employees are miserable. It's terrible. And having said that, I don't know if this is the right thing to say, but, you know, we did it during COVID. If there's some people that can work from home, I think we should maybe honor that or, or suggest that city manager, because, especially after, after they move, because it's, it was terrible. It's terrible. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing at this time.
Councilman Kell.
Just getting really nice outside, try to get out and see, see what's going on in Topeka. If you have events, please share those. You know, there's a lot of good things going on in Topeka lately, so just get out and get to those events, please. Thank you.
Councilman Miller.
Nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to take just a few minutes. I sent out some information earlier today to the council, city manager, just worked through some data that the League of Municipalities put out recently on, on our current taxing status, and took a look at the Class 1 cities. Twenty-six Class 1 cities in Kansas. Richard Neinsteins been city manager of three of them, so if that tells you anything. And really, as we head into budget season, I mean, we're already there, you know, we get these, we get these comparisons to cities like Lawrence and, and Overland Park and Shawnee and places like that. And I was interested in looking at where we rank in terms of the value of our taxable property versus some of those other cities. And that's in the, the tables I sent out, I probably presented it a little bit clear, but it's the best I could do with my limited Excel skills. So Topeka ranks, in population, we rank fifth in the state. In area of our city limits, we rank fourth. So we're right there at fourth and fifth. If you take the value of our taxable property divided either by population or area to get a feel for how much money we have per person, or how much value we have per person, how much value we have per square mile, because that's, that's where our property tax comes from, we rank, in those two categories, we rank 11th and 12th. So that means it's more difficult for us to provide those services that, from the general fund, police, fire, some of our public works activities, than 11 or 12 other cities of the first class in Kansas. So to try to compare us to particularly the Johnson County cities, if you look at those categories, the top five or six are all Johnson County cities. They have tremendous value in their, inside their city limits. We have a lot of exempt property, and obviously, we're happy to have the state here, and that plays a part of it. But as we look at the budget this year and start talking about spending money for a lot of different good causes, we've got to keep in mind that our primary effort needs to be increasing the value of taxable property in this city. That means grow, and we need to do that without expanding the city limits. This city hasn't, you know, annexed, aggressively annexed for 25 or 30 years, and we're probably not going to start now, and I don't know that that's the right way to do it. We have a lot of areas in this community that need to be redeveloped, you know? Shopping centers at 29th and California. The value of those assets now is low. We know we can increase those values over time. We need to look at, at the programs that we need to put in place in addition to those that are already there that can increase that value. Otherwise, we're going to continue to slip down that list, and it's just, it, it's, it's a, it's a spiral that becomes difficult to recover from if we don't figure it out. So a lot of information there. Happy to, to visit with anybody about, about those numbers, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Duncan.
Mr. Mayor, if I could follow up on, on what Councilman Dobler said, here's the other thing. When you look at those statistics, I got heard on the radio today from Johnson County, hey, we have the lowest mills in the state, that's why people should come here. But you have to look deeper than that. If you look at their assessed valuation, it's in the trillions, right? And sometimes, and that, that makes a mill to them worth a lot more than a mill to us, and they may have lower mills, but they're also levying more property tax than, say, we. So you have, you have to be careful what's being, you have to listen closely to what's being said and understand in what context it's being said, so. We should do our own thing.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Ortiz, your attorney wanted me to remind you that when you fall, after you call for help, you're supposed to call your attorney, and the statute of limitations probably hasn't worn out, so feel free. Two quick things, Mayor. Next Tuesday, Policy and Finance Committee is going to meet, and we're going to kind of do a little bit deeper dive into the just under a million dollars of projects that still haven't tapped into their ARPA funds and kind of ask why, and as we work through that process. So to any of those folks who are sitting there who haven't spent your money, you're going to want to pay attention to that Tuesday meeting, and then anyone else who's interested in that process, that's going to be the focus of that meeting on Tuesday. And then the second thing is, I'm a member of the Shawnee County Childcare Task Force. Lately, last year, one of the things that Task Force did was, we brought in a grant, a little over $3 million, which is now being dispersed and working with about 10 different childcare agencies here in town to expand those slots. It's going to add about 450 or so slots, which sounds like a lot until you realize we actually need a little over 3,000 slots. That's our estimated shortage in this county for childcare. But one of the things that's come out of that is a, a new initiative called Family Forward, and it's going to have a little soft launch tomorrow at Washburn Tech on Huntune at 10 a.m. And the focus of that is to try to encourage businesses in this community to donate into that fund, and it certainly can be applied to some, but, but we have businesses in this community who don't necessarily want to or need to have the resources to fully fund childcare services, but they want to help the cause because they know that if we don't solve this problem, recruiting good employees and keeping them in this community is nearly impossible. And so the purpose of that fund is to bring in dollars that can then also be used to make sure that that 3 million keeps going forever, right? So that we can continue to offer slots to the community in a lot of different ways. And so part of that program will be reaching out to the business community and anyone else who wants to, who wants to donate to that to create some long-term stability for healthcare, or for, I mean, for childcare slots in our community. So 10 a.m. tomorrow, if anyone can make it to, to see that sort of soft launch, but I'm glad to see that that work is moving forward and trying to add some childcare to Shawnee County and Topeka. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hofer.
I've got two things. First one, I've been to a couple of zoning meetings and road project meetings, and I want to thank our staff. They're doing a great job of getting out and trying to meet the constituents where they're going to have a mill and overlay project. It's real important that people get out and see that and hear what they have to say and ask questions. So thank you to everyone who's been helping with that. The other thing, and this is one of the fun parts of our job, last week, I believe, we had the 66th Basic Training Academy graduation. So it was a very, I really enjoyed the ceremony. We had a great speaker, and the group that has just recently joined the police force, I'm, I was very impressed with them as a group. They seem like a very cohesive group, and I'm looking forward to their future tenure in the police department. So I want to welcome to the city Jacob Davidson, Ruth Hockenberger, Adam Lloyd, Patrick McCarty, Tyler Miller, and Aldo Barto Sanchez. It's important to support all of our new police officers and fire department officers, and it's very humbling to go to the ceremonies and see them coming on board. I really enjoy that, so congratulations to all of them.
Thank you, guys. Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I, as many people know, I've been really busy, and, and there've been a lot of things going on in the community as well, and I did want to touch on some of them. For those who went to the 70th anniversary Brownie Board events, they really aren't even quite open, over yet, but they were phenomenal. A lot of volunteers and community folks made them happen. I think I mentioned last meeting that I was going to be in the spoken word choir. That was really an amazing event at Washburn University, and they hosted the rehearsals as well as the performances of not just that, but other events as well. The, that's supposed to be made into a film. We'll see how that, how that emerges. The art exhibit related to that is still there in the Rita Blit Gallery next to the White Concert Hall, and I encourage people to go to that. I think it's going to move to the Great Overland Station in District 2 somewhere around the end of July, and then we'll, we'll travel nationally, and it's, it's very powerful. Some of those type of events are continuing even this weekend in Noto. There's a Gwendolyn Brooks Poetry Event Thursday evening in Noto, and then the first Friday is loaded with poetry and various other experiences as well. Juneteenth is already underway here in Topeka, and Fiesta is pending, as is for the culture, both in July. It, just, things are just tumbling over one another. Meanwhile, the first ever Saturday morning Mimosa Mile was introduced last weekend, I think with great success, and so that's really the first flex for common consumption, moving out where they actually promoted it as an opportunity to go from establishment to establishment, either, either restaurants or go shopping or just be out on Kansas Avenue. So some of the hard work that we've done, the policy end up, is, is emerging in a good way. Overall, without naming all of the circumstances, I want to give a shout out to Code, to Public Works, to Utilities, to the police, and to my colleagues here on the council. We've had various crises, opportunities. I don't know if everybody else is, but I've been loaded with calls from, from citizens concerned about one thing or another, and I just, everybody is holding up and, and doing the best that they can, I think, but it's been, it's been a busy time around here. So just a shout out again, thanks in particular to Councilwoman Hofer for being so faithful. It's in my district, and before she was elected to council, she was the one who would take care of the businesses in that whole riverfront area, and that, that has continued, and particularly right now, that is, that is so important. Two more items on, on my personal side of community service. Two more items on, on my personal side of community service. I think most of you know that I've been actively involved in Topeka United, a movement for the last now five years. And we are in open recruiting right now for Mosaic Partner Pairs 2024. We've moved it to the school year, so the portal is open now if people want to sign up for that nine-month engagement, partnered with someone who's different from you on the outside but has similarities on the inside. We have wonderful donors, so that it is no cost to the participants. It's structured. Our volunteers are all coaches who have been through the program already. So we're really excited to invite everyone here and everyone watching to sign up for Mosaic Partner Pairs. Also, Topeka United's annual Call River Float is on June 22nd. The outfitters are Dirty Girl Adventures, and you can sign up in both cases if, if people go to Topeka United, either the website or Facebook page. You can find more information about both and sign up portals. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to just echo comments by Councilwoman Hofer about the graduation ceremony for the Topeka Police candidates. Well, not candidates, they're brand-new officers. It was a good ceremony. It's encouraging to see these people stepping forward to protect our city, knowing that they're kind of holding the tide right now because we're still short of manpower. And it's important for us to continue to recruit to our city. I do want to also make note with the Chief Phillips back here, sitting in the, I think he's awake, yeah. Every opportunity that they have, Camp Courage, I've asked him to allow me to come in and greet those young ladies who are coming in. It's a very specific program to try and present the profession of firefighters to the female population, where they're trying to grow their membership into the firefighting family. And it's, it's really something that you, if you have an opportunity to do, this coming Friday, I think is their final day, is that correct, Chief?
Yes, sir.
And they're going to be doing a couple of things, and he was, was even telling me that some of them have said, well, I'm not going to do that, that's just not me. And then they end up doing it. And he spoke to that in his opening remarks, telling them how participating in this Camp Courage helps them build self-confidence in what they can accomplish. And some of the participants probably come from a background where they would have never given any thought to becoming a firefighter, because they never saw that as a possibility for them. So it's important for us to support wherever we can the recruiting efforts of the fire department and the police department in the different ways that they're trying to do it. And this Friday on graduation, they're going to be doing something that, for a lot of them, is going to be way out of their comfort zone. They're going to be rappelling down the tower down there. So you've got a little bit of time. What time is that, Chief? About 2:30 or so?
Uh, 2:00, yes.
Okay, about 2:00 o'clock, where they're going to be rappelling down from that tower. And if you've got the time to go down there, encourage them, thank them for participating in the program, and let them know that we really appreciate their efforts to try and join the city of Topeka in a profession that is essential to our community. So that being said, there is a need for one executive session. If our city attorney would read the motion, please.
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed one hour to discuss employer-employee negotiations relating to one or more unions as justified by KSA 7543 19B3. The meeting will resume in the City Council chambers. The following staff are necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations, interim city manager Neinstadt, and other staff he deems necessary.
Okay. Heard the need for executive session. Is there a motion? Motion to go into executive session by Councilman Dobler, second, by Councilman Banks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, one opposed? We will recess into executive session and take a 10-minute break before we start our discussion. We have concluded our executive session. No decisions have been made, no action has been taken, no further business coming before this body. This meeting is adjourned.